Good evening. I'd like to call the Board of Education meeting for Wednesday, March 26th to order. Can we have a roll call, please, Mrs. Slater?
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Here.
Mrs. Evans?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mrs. Larson's excused. Mr. Nielsen?
Here.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Here.
I am here.
Thank you. Has the meeting been properly posted, Dr. Pat?
Yes.
Thank you. Please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance. Our pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Item three on the agenda is community comment. Per board policy, we allow up to 15 minutes of resident comment. If you'd like to make a comment, please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address.
Jim Lysick, 8756 West Mallard Court. I was before you people, few months back, I'd say four or five, and talked to you about softball diamonds for the girls. And I met with Dr. Pat afterward, and he showed me the big plan up at the high school and everything else. And I'd been going to the common council meetings and talking to the mayor and the councilmen and women. And I got this for the parks. And it says here it was developed March and April 2000 for the 2002 Comprehensive Outdoor Recreation Plan. It also says this was updated August 10, in August of 2010, for the same thing. Now, this is 2014. We have no girls' softball diamond that is worth playing on, in my opinion. I officiated girls' fast-pitch softball for 16 years for WIA. I officiated boys' football for 17 years for the WIA. I've asked all of you people to go and take a look, the last time I was here, at the girls' softball field. Can I ask, has anybody gone over there and really taken a look? You have. What do you think of the conditions over there? Not good, are they? And it's 2014, and they're supposed to play against other teams at a high school caliber, and the girls have to use a porta potty. You gotta be kidding me. A few years back, when I was officiating, we at least did the, I did the games at Freming Park, a couple of them. But to use a porta potty nowadays at a high school game, and it's one porta potty for two teams, all the parents, all the grandparents, and everybody else that shows up. Kind of sad situation for the city of Franklin with all the taxes we pay. Now, there have been solutions brought up to the mayor and to Dr. Pat's. I have brought them to both of them. And I understand that the school board is in charge of Robinwood, St. Martin's Park, that we lease from the county. We also have Freming Park, which we don't have. That's a county park now, and we have to lease a diamond in order to play there. I'm trying to get something here where we, as a city, can get a Freming Park, which is close to the high school at least, for the girls to use. Let's lease it from the county somehow, get it fixed up, and use it. And there's also the little teams, the club teams that start in five, six, seven, eight-year-olds where they want to play soccer and they want to play softball. They have no place to go. Tell me, you got the Little League field. There's one girls' diamond over there. That's it. One softball diamond. You got Countrydale School. At Countrydale, they have two diamonds. They're never kept up. Now, Dr. Pat's and I talked about that, and he said, "We'll look into it." I haven't heard anything yet, so I'm assuming we're still looking into it. We have Southwood Glen, a big area. We own Pleasant View Schools, big areas in back and stuff. We could put up two or three softball diamonds, because they don't take up that much room, with parking and outdoor bathrooms right there, built in. Or you can use the bathrooms in the school if you want. But I'm just saying, we have to look as a community. These girls have been left behind for years, and it's about time that this school board starts looking and taking care of the girls of this community instead of always looking after the boys. Another thing now I'm going to bring up is the new football field. I was talking to, not a friend, but an associate of mine. She lives in Oak Creek. And I was telling her about the nice field we're going to have, the football field and everything else. She says, "Yeah, Oak Creek got one." She said, "They're not allowed to play soccer on it anymore." I said, "Really?" She said, "Yeah, they told me they couldn't play on it because they were wrecking the new turf." So I took it upon myself to call the athletic director at Oak Creek today. And he said, "You're right, they're not playing on it." But he said, "That's because the players don't want to play on it. They'd rather play on regular turf than the artificial turf." Now, my question would be, all these people who wanted the artificial turf for the soccer players, did they really ask any of the players if that's what they want? Everybody will take something new, but did they ever play on them? Do they know what's really like to play on that? I don't think it's safe for soccer, personally, but, you know, and we're going to run into a situation now where you promised the whole city that this is going to be our soccer field, and what's going to happen if they start getting injured, or they decide it's too slippery, or we can't play on there? Oak Creek says that they are going to play only when the conditions aren't available at their middle school for their varsity to play, because their varsity is now playing over at their middle school. I'd just throw this out for thought. I think that this should have been investigated more before you brought it to the people and said, "Well, that's going to be our soccer field also." People have to start looking into depth a little bit more around here. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Elizabeth Fritz, 11842 West Elmwood Drive. I'm here to speak with you tonight a little bit about the compensation framework that's on your agenda for your staff and your schools. I grew up and was educated in Franklin, from first grade through graduated high school. Hello, Mr. Alexandrovich. Your children and I were friends. The teachers that I had in Franklin inspired me to become a teacher. I am a public high school teacher. I teach at Oak Creek High School. Love my job. And I chose about three years ago to buy a house for my family in Franklin. So my husband and I and my two sons now live in Franklin. Lot of time here, and I want to spend a lot of time here. But I'm worried about what you're looking at tonight for your teachers. Having a great school system was a huge benefit to me, and I chose to move here because I wanted that for my children. And I think some of the things that are in this pay structure will erode that. My children are three and two months. I am afraid that by the time they are going to be in school, the veteran and quality teachers that I had will no longer be in your classrooms. This pay structure doesn't give any person any idea what they're going to be making in future years. Why would they want to invest in a career here in Franklin if they didn't know what they were going to be making? There was no input, practically no input from teachers. That signals to educators that their input isn't valued. Again, why would they want to have a career here if their input's not valued? Most of the increases in this pay structure are by taking on additional duties. As a teacher myself, I understand how much time and effort's already put into the work in your classroom, and to be able to make additional money only by taking on additional duties? I don't know how that's possible. This salary schedule needs to be supported by the educators so that the morale of the educators isn't low. That's not a good thing for the students or anyone. Teachers need to collaborate. That's the best way for things to turn out well for our students. And a salary structure like you have proposed creates competition between your teachers to earn some of these positions and to earn higher pay. Why would they collaborate with each other if someone else is going to get a higher pay than them? Collaborationally gone. As a Franklin Public Schools alum, as a community member, a parent of future Franklin Public School students, I hope, and a teacher myself, I really urge you to consider alternatives to your current proposal, and when you do, to work with your teachers so that we can attract and retain quality teachers, the ones that I had, and, I hope, the ones that my children will have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jeff Dahlberg. I live at 4213 West Tumble Creek Drive in Franklin. I have three children, two of which who are at Pleasant View. We've been extremely pleasant with our experience there at Pleasant View. It's fantastic. And I'm also here to talk about what I would call a really lackluster proposal that this salary structure, or so-called salary structure compensation framework, is. Many of you are in private business, you're in the private sector, and so you know how the free market works. So let me just remind you, talent goes to where the money is. And if we don't have money, if we're not putting money on the table, our talent will go elsewhere. It will leave, and it's not going to come back here. It won't. This district will be held in the same regard as New Berlin, Greenfield, and Oconomowoc. And as Dr. Pat knows, how that worked out for the superintendent in Greenfield. We don't want that here, because we do like our schools. In the free market, we don't dictate what things are going to cost. They do that in communist countries, all right? If you tell people that 90% of your staff will earn less than the average, or less than what the area average is, why would they come here? Would we tell students that 90% of them could only get a C or less? Would we tell our students that only 10% of them could have As and Bs? Would we tell our administrative staff here that only 10% of them can have the highest salary in their particular field or pay bracket? No. As a taxpayer, we pay among the highest taxes in this state, as you all know. I would expect that we have some of the highest test scores in the state, which we do. We have great scores. So along with those high test scores, we should have some of the highest salaries in the state of Wisconsin. This does not offer that. I heard collaboration mentioned before. Not only the collaboration that this will destroy with the professional teaching staff, there's really a lack of collaboration with the administrators, the administration, and the staff. Act 10 gives you, the school board, the freedom to do what you want. You can choose to allow a tyranny to ensue where one person enforces and imposes a plan, or you can allow there to be collaboration. Truly listen to the people who day in and day out work with teachers, or the teachers working with students, and listen to what their needs are. Lastly, and I think I heard this before too, these incomes are not sustainable for living in this community. They're not. 90% of the staff would no longer, not that 90% does live here, but if we want them to live here, they wouldn't be able to. They wouldn't be able to afford to. They wouldn't be able to afford to pay these taxes. So that's all I have to say. I implore you, as a school board, to not act on this action tonight, and to go back to the drawing board, go back to the negotiating table, and talk with the staff. Thank you.
My name is Jill Petrie. I live at 8050 South 85th Street. I'm also the General Intervention Coordinator for the South Milwaukee School District. I also would like to speak to the new proposed salary system for your professional educators. As a professional educator, it continues to be disheartening when I hear school districts not respecting their number-one resource. In an educational setting, you need to have collaboration in order to address all the challenges that we face each day. Us versus them does not work in this setting. And by making such impactful decisions about people's livelihood without allowing them to sit at the table, creates a non-collaborative us versus them environment. Public education continues to be attacked. We should be standing together and working together to show everyone that public education does work. As a parent, I'm concerned that Franklin School District is not concerned about putting and keeping the best educators in front of my children. I personally worked at a school district for 22 years, and I began to feel like the district I was working in was not respecting the people who are on the front lines and have the most impact on children. Decisions were being made without the opinions of the educational experts being consulted. A job opportunity in another district presented itself, and due to the climate in the district I was working in, I decided to take the new job. In my current district, teachers and administrators are working together to make decisions, including creating a new teacher salary structure last year. In fact, I have copies of this pay structure and the process that was used to create it with me tonight, and I'll share it with you when I'm done speaking. If, after reviewing this document, if you have any questions, any of the people listed on the front of the document would be more than happy to discuss it with you. Everyone that was part of this process, from the superintendent, the school board members, and the teachers, are very proud of how they worked through their emotions and their opinions to reach common ground. They are so proud that they all presented this process at the school board convention earlier this year. I feel heard and respected in my new district. Several teachers from my old district have made similar moves, and more are regularly looking at job openings in specific districts. What is going to stop Franklin School District teachers from doing the same, or leaving the profession altogether? If the district is not going to make this an attractive profession and a district to work in, your main job as a school board and as administration is to attract and retain quality educators. You can renovate as many buildings as you want, but if you don't have the quality staff working in those buildings, the investment is not going to pay off. Decision-making like this makes me question all decisions that the district is making regarding my children's education. It makes me question the decision-making process in such decisions like standard-based grading, the inroads program, the teacher health insurance, and retirement benefits. Was this a collaborative process? Or are teachers being asked to be at the table for some decisions, but not all? And who is deciding what people are at the table for which decisions? After all, decision-making is more about the process than the product. Please give me and other educators hope that you understand how important it is that we stand together for quality public education. And please give me confidence, as a parent, that the school district my children attend gives priority to their most valuable resource.
My name is Jackie McLegg. I live at 7809 Stone Brook Court. My husband and I have lived in Franklin for 17 years, and we actually purchased our home before our children were even born. The primary reason we settled in Franklin was the excellent reputation of the school district. It's why we moved here and why we stay here. I'm also here tonight to express concern about the proposed evaluation compensation structure. It seems that this structure isn't logical, equitable, or predictable in how professional educators will be compensated. We now have two children in the district. Our daughter has excelled academically and benefited from the GT programs at the elementary level and the honors and the AP classes at the high school. Our son has an intellectual disability, and he has thrived as well. They have been successful in large part due to the collaborative efforts of experienced teachers. GT staff have collaborated with regular education staff to challenge students. Special education teachers work hand-in-hand with regular education teachers to provide inclusive communities for all of our children. Will this new system pit these teachers against one another and promote an unhealthy competitive environment that decreases the team approach? Will the new structure give caring teachers pause for concern if they have my son in their classroom? Will having a child with a disability impact them negatively in this new structure? As a parent, I value a teacher's strong grasp of their content area, their strength in instructional practices, their ability to motivate and engage my children, their quest to meet the academic, social, emotional, and behavioral needs of my children and others, and their ability to respectfully and effectively communicate with me and my children. These are the priorities of me as a parent. Though I recognize teachers wear a lot of hats, it is not a priority of mine what committees they serve on, or what additional administrative tasks they take on. Will my daughter's math teacher still be willing to stay beyond his contracted day to provide her extra help, or will he need to rush off to some extra duty because that's what he'll be compensated for? I would be extremely frustrated by this, but understand his need to provide for his family. It's a lose-lose situation for teachers, our children, and the community as a whole. I implore you to not lose sight of the big picture. This district has a strong reputation, which most likely took some time to build. Please do not be short-sighted in your vision and impose a structure on educators that will undermine their value or drive valuable and qualified professionals to other communities. Strong teachers will leave this district if they are not valued and fairly compensated. The district will not be able to retain or attain strong new teachers. It may not take long for this district's reputation to turn sour. Please do not let this occur under your leadership. Our biggest asset in this district is the stellar educators that are employed here. Please go back to the table with them and listen. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Margery Dargowitz. I'm part of the school community. I'm a teacher at three different schools, Franklin Education Professional Association President. This past winter, we took a survey of all the teachers. 209 teachers participated, and I would like to just give you some highlights on some of the results for this salary structure. How important do you believe it is for educators in Franklin to have a choice, a voice in development of the new teacher salary structure? 95.9% said it was highly important, 165 teachers. What values do you believe are important in any future system for career salary advancement? The first one was clear, visible path, a schedule for all to see and symbol to understand. The second one was objectivity, salary advancement not based on subjective administrative judgment. The third one was predictability, a person has reasonable knowledge of salary changes over time. Attainability, everyone can achieve top salary. 75% said top pay rates are at least as good as present rates. Higher starting pay. Education, education should count. Rewards and lanes are important to teachers. Experience rewarded as in steps. 84.8% said this was one of the top priorities. Higher base salary for extra work such as additional roles, responsibilities, and assignments as opposed to extra pay per assignment. 46.2% said this was unfair. Merit pay is pay increases or bonuses for individual employees based on administrative assessment of the quality of work each employee does. Do you believe that a system of merit pay at our district would be fair and objective? 68.6% said no. Do you support a salary advancement based on observations or evaluations by administrators? 51.2% said no. Do you believe that this system provides a clear, predictable path for salary advancement for professional educators in Franklin? 56.9% said no. The principal way a teacher can increase their salary in the compensation framework is by taking on extra work and duties. Do you believe this is fair and achievable? 72.2% said no. Getting extra work and duties will depend on the assignment of such duties and responsibilities by administrators. Do you believe these assignments will be made fairly? 58.6% said no. The people that were on this evaluation structure committee informed us that their input was reserved to making decisions on ideas that were presented to them, rather than giving the administration ideas to consider. I strongly request that you revise and go over this structure and get some honest and collaborative input from the teachers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jenny Shahoney, and I live at 8700 West Putes Road. I'm also here to implore, on the teacher's behalf tonight, to ask that you please do not take action on this new salary schedule. My son is in eighth grade. He has had the most wonderful experience in middle school. I'm also a teacher. I've been a teacher for 20 years, and I don't know many middle schoolers that look forward to going to school every day. I can't go on enough about the positive experience that he has had at the middle school, with his teachers, with the administrators. Everybody has been wonderful. And when I found out about this new compensation schedule, it scared me. It scared me that we were going to lose really good staff here in Franklin. And I have a younger son who will also be coming up through the school district, and I'm worried. And I just really am begging that you sit down and collaborate with the staff. And I know time is running short, and other people want to say stuff, so that's all. Thank you.
My name is Kathy Largent-Rangshub, and I'm a speech-language pathologist in your district. At this time, I work with both early childhood programs, and I'm a member of the assistive technology team for communication. I do not live in Franklin. I'm not sure why it's taken me so long to get up and say something. In fact, my husband and others who know me are quite surprised that it's taken me so long to stand up for not only myself, but for all of us who work with your children. I'm known to be very opinionated and not a shrinking violet when it comes to expressing my opinion. I'm talking to you tonight for two reasons. I think that it's important that you know what kind of people that you have working with your children, and I'm going to start by telling you a little bit about myself. Secondly, I want to talk to you a little bit about why I continue to work with your children. I'll start by telling you a little bit about myself. I'm married and joined the Air Force in the mid-'70s. Joining the military in the mid-'70s during the Vietnam War wasn't very easy. We weren't given much respect, and Congress certainly didn't think we were worth much when it came to pay. It took determination and hard work just to make it through basic training, but I did. I had two children and decided that I wanted to be a speech-language pathologist. I went to school to get my degree when my children started school. Before getting my master's degree, which is required in Wisconsin to work as a speech-language pathologist, I got divorced and moved back to Wisconsin with my two children. That meant that I had to raise my two children, work full-time, and go to school part-time. Again, this took determination and hard work. I'm proud to say that both of my boys have turned into wonderful young men. While going to school, I found out that what I really wanted to do was work with children with significant special needs. Doing this also takes determination and hard work. Seems like there's a pattern here. I don't seem to choose things that are easy, but things that I need to work hard for and stick to in order to make a difference. That's who I am, and it's also who the other teachers are that work with your children. We care about your children, and we often give up things for ourselves in order to give them what we feel is best. Now, for why I've stuck to what I do instead of moving on. Being a speech-language pathologist and working with children is really my passion. I love doing it. I enjoy all of the challenges that come with working out how best to work with each child on my caseload. I like working as part of a team to help children learn and to become communicators. I love the feeling I get when a child gets it and begins to blossom. There's nothing like it. I spend a lot of time at home looking for toys and activities that will excite the children that I work with. I don't think that I go anywhere or do anything without the kids on my caseload in the back of my mind, looking for that special thing that's going to excite a child who continues to struggle. I'm not stuck to what I do because I've been shown respect by the governor or by some of you on the school board. The passing of Act 10 has been terrible for the state of Wisconsin. It's pitted school boards against teaching staff in every way. It's pitted school boards against teaching staff in every way. We should be working together in a win-win situation instead of a win-lose situation. I don't believe it has to be that way. Act Ten has blamed teachers for the budget shortfalls that we have, when we've really given up pay raises to keep your children in smaller classes. We've given up pay raises to keep our health benefits and our retirement benefits. We've given up pay raises to allow the district to make improvements. All of that seems to have been forgotten, so that school boards across the state could make decisions to cut these things without any remorse or feeling about those of us who it affects deeply. Are there teachers and staff who are just putting in their time until they can retire and who've graduated at the bottom half of their class? Of course there are, but I don't feel there are any more in our profession than there are in other professions. Take lawyers and doctors. There are lawyers and doctors who have not graduated in the top half of their class and who are just putting in their time till they can get out of it. What do we do about that? We don't condemn them for all the social ills that are befalling our society. We don't show disrespect for their whole decision. It does feel that that's what's being done to some of us who are working so closely with your children and who care about your children. I'm not sure how long any of us will be able to stay in a profession where we're treated in this manner. If you want to know more about us, I would invite you to take the next step to get to know us before you make any decisions that will impact us so deeply. Come into the schools and take time to see what we do, and how much we care and how good we are at what we do. I'm not talking an hour. I'm talking a couple of days a week to follow an educator around, to see what he or she does to prepare to work with your children and how we work with your children. If it's not one educator, pick several educators at different levels so that you can see what we all do and get a better understanding of what our job is.
Thank you.
I'm also a member of the City Planning Commission. I just want to bring up a couple of things. One, I want to applaud the board. I was here when you approved the new football stadium. I think it was a great move we made, and I want to applaud Superintendent Patz and the Director of Business Services, Jim Millsner, for their excellent work on that, working with that committee. Seizing that opportunity shows that you believe in the vision for this education system that we have here. Also, I think the city of Franklin, and particularly the area that's in Franklin, that's where the schools of Franklin sit, is on the cusp of some really great move forward and be sustainable financially. We have the opportunity at The Rock, there's the potential for a baseball stadium to be built there for a minor league baseball team. The planning commission had that in front of us at our last meeting. In fact, the president of the school board, Janet Evans, was in attendance at that meeting. I was appreciated to see her there showing support for that. And I think that stadium is going to give an opportunity for that whole area to see increased business tax base if Ross and Seventy-Sixth Street can be developed. It also might actually have some softball fields, with the gentleman that was talking about, that we were short of women's softball fields. What I'm getting at, the third point, is the sustainability of the area is also going to be developed by the fact that the Ryan Creek Interceptor is being put in. In the southwest quadrant of Franklin is going to be developed. What that leads to is we're going to have a lot of areas to be developed. We're going to have people who are going to be attracted here. I have written into the record of the planning commission at least five times when individuals have come here and talked about, one of the reasons they come here is that this school system is an excellent school system, and that's the reason why they come here, despite the fact that the Franklin School District does have slightly higher property taxes than other areas, because we're paying for what we get, which is a great system. I would ask you to reconsider the potential for the long-term sustainability of the school because the teachers, we have great infrastructure, the new auditorium we're putting in. We're going to have this great infrastructure. It would be a shame if we begin to lose teachers because we don't reward them or don't value their input when we're making these decisions. And I would urge you to reconsider and think about including some of those teachers in on this decision-making before you make this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any other comment? Can I see a show of hands of how many more people would like to make comment?
Two minutes. My name is Mike Carini. I live at ninety-five-twenty-three South Ryan Green Court. I've grown up in Franklin, been at every Franklin public school, K-12. I know a lot of familiar faces here as well. I graduated in two thousand and seven, and I had high honors then. I had high honors in college. I would not be anywhere near where I am right now if it wasn't for the staff, the veteran teachers, and myself. I am a teacher now because of what they've done. I teach at another local school district, and I'm afraid if Franklin passes us, the same thing will happen to us. There is nothing else that would push me out of education further than this plan, so I'm really asking you to reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, last call for community comment. All right, thank you very much for your comment. Item four on the agenda is approval of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Witkowski, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Item five is consent agenda. Is there any board member that would like to remove an item from the consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve items five A through five D on the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Klein. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Item six, school board announcements. Are there any announcements?
There's the Forest Park Middle School spaghetti dinners next Tuesday, put on by the music department. It's really good food, stetsumori spaghetti. Advanced tickets are eight dollars for adults, five dollars for kids, or ten dollars at the door. And they have strings and the jazz band and the pop singers sing. It's kind of a good time.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
The high school is putting on the musical Legally Blonde next week, Thursday, Friday, Saturday performances, I believe. It's going to be held in the auditorium at Greendale High School for this year, and hopefully next year we'll have our own place to host it.
Thank you. Anything else?
Got one just on April thirtieth. If the board could keep your calendar free, it's a non-board night, but we'd like to set up a night at five-thirty on that evening to be able to tour the existing construction project that's going on. If you're available, we can change that date if we need to, but tentatively, if you could sit aside on your calendar, that would be a good night to do that.
Can you repeat that date again?
April thirtieth. It's a Wednesday.
Okay, thank you. Five-thirty.
Five-thirty, yeah.
Thank you. All right, school board calendar. We have a regular board meeting on Wednesday, April ninth, here at the Education and Community Center at six o'clock PM. And we have the annual reorganization meeting on Wednesday, April twenty-third, here at the Education and Community Center at six o'clock PM. Item eight is the liaison reports. We have personnel and policy reports. Dr. Miller, we'll go to you.
Sure, I'd be glad to do that.
Thank you.
So, we have a couple of policies that I'm bringing forward to the board this evening, frankly, to have them eliminated. We'll start with reduction in staff policy, forty-two sixteen. This is a policy that was last, well, it was adopted in nineteen ninety-eight. Currently, we have the provisions with regard to any reduction in staff in our handbook, and we therefore no longer need this policy. All of the manners in which we reduce our staff are directly listed in our handbook. So I would recommend that it be eliminated.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to eliminate policy four-two-one-six, reduction in staff?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Nielsen, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Schlitter, is there any discussion?
What does the policy handbook say?
Well, there's actually three sections in the handbook that pertain to reduction in staff, and they're rather specific, so...
How much does it vary from what this says?
It's somewhat different with regard to the language, because we no longer use layoff language in the handbook, but essentially, you know, pieces of this are the same. It talks about normal attrition. It talks about volunteers being asked first if they would like to be reduced. So the recall procedure is a piece of what's in the handbook. It's not exactly the same as what is in the administrative rules here, but it is similar, but there are some differences. And again, there's a different section in the handbook for each employee group with regard to how our employees are reduced.
The handbook is current where this policy is out of date.
Correct. The administrative rules are out of date here.
And we adopted the handbook, the board did, so... Any other discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion by Mr. Nielsen, second by Mrs. Schlitter, to eliminate policy four-two-one-six, reduction in staff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries.
Okay, the second policy is Board Policy forty-one-eighty, promotion and/or sale of performance supplements. This, too, is an old policy of the board, first adopted in nineteen ninety-nine. With regard to this policy, it really isn't necessary to have this policy. We do provide this information to our coaches within a annual preseason meeting, and also in our coaches' handbook, we are clear to identify that we follow all WIAA policies on banned substances and the recommendations on performance-enhancing substitutes, as it would be called, and we do educate our coaches on that and monitor that closely, and we have not had any incidents of any kind with this. So I would recommend that this should be eliminated as a board policy.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion to eliminate policy four-one-eight-zero, promotion and/or sale of performance supplements?
So moved.
Motion by Mr. Alexandrovich, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen, any discussion?
I have a question. I understand how this affects the high school students, and especially with the athletic code and the handbook. How does this trickle down to middle school?
You know, any of the individuals who coach, whether it be middle school or high school, are provided the same information.
Okay. Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Alexandrovich, second by Mr. Nielsen, to eliminate policy four-one-eight-zero, promotion and/or sale of performance supplements. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries. Thank you. Item nine A, instructional services report world language trips.
Dr. Dzerick, I'll take that one. We're fortunate this evening to bring German and Spanish trips forward to you. I just wanted to, it's often annually, but not always, that teachers provide these opportunities to students. It's the vision of the teacher and the idea to bring forward the opportunity for students to attend these trips. We know that financially, all students can attend them, but we do feel that providing an international experience for a student truly gets them to understand the culture and the language. So we're fortunate to have teachers that are willing to do this. And tonight, we have Charles Benish here to talk about German, so he'll come up and say a few words. These aren't new trips. You've heard of them before. It's policy in practice that we bring them before the board so you understand they're occurring, so it's not anything different maybe to Alan, hasn't heard them because he's new, but to the rest of you, it's really approving past trips for new students. So we'll have Charles, and then we have Alejandra Krollick and Cheryl Johnson here, who will speak to the Spanish trip. In Spanish, I want to mention, we offer two different trips for our students. One is more of a standard trip that we do through a company who provides the itinerary and assists the teachers in organizing the work, and that trip just happened over spring break. And from Cheryl and Alejandra, you'll hear of more of a cultural immersion trip where they actually spend time with family. So two different opportunities, different lengths of time for the students. So that's why you see the different trips, because different students like different experiences. So we're fortunate that teachers are willing to do that. So I'm not sure there's...
They decided to go first.
Okay. No worries.
Hello.
Hi.
First, I wanted to mention that the proposal, it actually should say for summer of twenty-fifteen. I think that we made a typo. And basically, we would like to depart in June, at the end of the school year, and it's basically a two-week trip. They're going to spend about nine days or so in Madrid, and then they're going to travel from there to Barcelona. The first part of the trip, they're going to spend with host families. They'll be going to school on a couple of days, and then the days that the students in Spain are in school, our students will be going on cultural field trips to different places in nearby areas, things that are close to the school. And they're encouraged to speak Spanish with their host families and do different, you know, just everyday things so they can get an idea of what it's like to live as a Spaniard. And we kind of, we like to compare and contrast the two cities, Madrid and Barcelona, so they get a chance to, well, we kind of talk, we talk to them about the differences between the cities, and they get a chance to see firsthand what it's like. And they get a chance to compare and contrast the different school systems. There are so many differences between what they're accustomed to here and what the students do in Spain, the way they learn, their free time activities, and it just goes on and on. It's a sister school that we developed a relationship with, with this school probably five years ago, six years ago. So we've been working with the teachers at that school, and the goal is for them to come, when the years that we don't travel, they travel here, and they get a chance to do the same thing with our students. So the students really love it because it gives them an opportunity to meet someone, and a lot of times, we've had a lot of former students that have gone on to form lifelong friendships with these kids, and they've, you know, we've had several students come back to us and say that they've gone on to travel on their own and, you know, just have had life-changing, I would say, experiences with them.
I think you'll notice that it does have an academic focus. They mentioned the power standards, and those are the four standards they teach to. So how does this trip allow those standards to come alive? And that's what happens when they're on the trip. They're still thinking about the standards and what they need to accomplish for the students, but doing it in definitely an authentic way.
And the both of you will be the chaperones?
Yes.
How do the students get to here, on their own, or...
No. We usually, we start in Franklin. We just get a bus. Last time, we took a school bus. I think the last couple of times, we just take a school bus down, and we, from the minute they get there to the time we come back, they're escorted by us.
And I know in the past, like, a few years ago, they had two other educators with them, so I think sometimes you do bring other...
It depends on the size.
Do I hear a motion to approve the proposed trip to Spain for the summer of twenty-fifteen? I'll make that motion. Motion by Mrs. Klein, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mrs. Schlitter, any discussion?
Do you have any idea how many are going this time?
We never do. I mean, we try to cap it at about fourteen because we like it to be. I mean, we try to cap it at about fourteen, because we like it to be intimate, and we think that that's a better way for us to get to know the students a lot better, because we're spending two weeks together.
Right.
And it also helps us find families where you really do have a connection. We try really hard to have families that were, you know, they have something in common, the two students have something in common, and so it makes it a little bit easier if we have a lower number.
And you have to find host families for each one of those students. So, that makes it tricky.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, there's a motion by Mrs. Klein, second by Mrs. Schlitter, to approve the proposed trip to Spain for the summer of twenty fifteen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Motion carries. Enjoy your trip.
Thank you so much.
Charles Benish, and we're switching to German.
Hi, thanks for having me. For the sake of brevity, if it's okay with you, I'd like not to go into specifics, because really, it's not much different than the Spanish trip, except in a few things. And the major one is that we do stay longer, and one of the reasons that we stay longer is that a major emphasis of the trip is that students are required to visit a German high school. So, the academic aspect is really stressed, and it's also subsidized by the German government. So, they are required to attend two weeks of school. They actually shadow the students when they're in Germany, and the German students did the same thing when they're here. So, the family stay is actually the biggest part of the trip. And this is actually the first trip I've taken where the students have decided, and the parents, that they would rather not travel that much. So, normally, we would stay for a few weeks with the family and then travel a little bit, see a little bit of Germany. But they have kind of decided and heard through the grapevine, so to speak, that the best part is the family stay, and it's where the students have the most fun and really experience most about Germany and what it's like living in Germany and high schools and things like that. So, they decided to extend that, and we're only going to be staying overnight in Munich, so for three nights. So, that's all we're doing. We're going to the family stay. It's our sister school, and it's been our sister school for about twenty years, I think, longer than I've been here. And after that, we just go to Munich, and then we fly out of Munich. The only other thing that is important that you know is that I have requested a waiver. I am taking long, fierce, sorry, I spoke German, for students who are seniors. And I'm asking for a waiver. I've done this almost every time I've gone, and it's never been an issue. They know that they are held to the same standards as any other students, even though they are officially graduated from the system. So, I ask for the waiver for them. If you have any questions, feel free.
Is this also for twenty fifteen, or is it for?
It's, this is twenty fourteen, and the only thing is that, and I'm sorry, I'm kind of coming late, but I've had some medical issues, and that's why I haven't been able to come earlier. The only thing that's changed there is the dates are one day earlier. You have dates there of June sixteenth through July seventh, and actually, the dates are now June fifteenth to July sixth.
And the two students from the other world language?
Yeah, and that's some really wonderful, it's, what happens every time is that there are anywhere from thirty to fifty students in Germany who want to come here. And we, of course, can't accommodate that, especially in the German program. So, what I generally do is I open it up to other students in the different languages at the high school and ask them, say, we need families to host. And when they host, then despite the fact that they haven't taken German, they are eligible then to take the trip to Germany. So, I mean, they've otherwise fulfilled all the other obligations or that they would need to, to be able to participate in the trip. So, I would like to have them go.
And it does go along with our district vision and mission of creating global students. You know, you have that global understanding if you've had the opportunity to do that international travel.
Do I hear a motion to approve the proposed German-American partnership program, summer trip for two thousand fourteen?
Make the motion.
Motion by Mrs. Schlitter. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Nielsen. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extension? Motion carries. Have a good time.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have the youth options.
So, order Mr. Nowak. It's a request that we put forth every year, and Michael will cover that.
Thank you. You have in front of you requests for ten youth options courses. Our process that we go through twice a year is to take these requests in from, I get them from our counselors. They're vetted through the counselors, also through our department coordinators. In some cases, it involves us contacting the university to find out, you know, exactly what the course is and whether or not it is above and beyond what we offer, because sometimes the names are fairly similar. We've done that. These are the courses that we bring to you today. You know, in many regards, it's a great testament to the achievement of our students, and in all the cases, it relates specifically to their interests moving forward.
Do I hear a motion to approve the youth options request as presented by Mr. Nowak?
Make that motion.
Motion by Mrs. Klein. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Alexandrovich. Is there any discussion?
Couple of questions. What is the advanced grammar online class practice? Is that connected to the above Spanish, or am I reading that wrong?
Are you talking to Spanish advanced grammar?
It says advanced grammar. I don't sign key this.
Right. Yeah, that's a Spanish course, and it's, again, above and beyond what kids would receive with us.
And what's the cost of all these classes?
There's a state rate. I don't know if you know that.
It's the, off the top of my head, I don't, we didn't include the packet with you, but we are charged a rate by the state. Each university doesn't charge their rate. The state tells them what they charge a district. So, it's a, it's a common rate across the state that we pay per course, and I can.
I want to say in the fifteen hundred range is what I'm thinking.
And what's it based on? Is it based on a standard state credit, or?
No, the state, this is, as you know, a requirement, you know, statute that says we have to provide youth options if they exhaust our courses. And then the state tells us, tells universities what kind of pay they will get from the school district. So, I don't know how the state, I'm sure they do some mathematical formula that Jim would understand, around averages, and they come up with a rate that they feel is fair, and then that's what the district is charged per credit.
I believe they look at the state rate, like the state system rate.
Right.
And then they make some adjustments, and then there's more of an adjustment with some of our private schools, because their tuition typically is higher, so.
Well, I guess, you know, I'm opposed to us approving these on the basis of the state telling us to do this. So, I'm not, I want to be clear that I'm not thinking negatively of their efforts to advance their education, but I'm opposed to, on the basis of the funding.
And just so we're clear, we're required to approve them. We don't have.
Well, you're asking me to approve, I think.
I know. But I'm just telling you that our obligation as a school district is to bring them.
And if you ask me to vote, my vote will be negative.
Okay.
For that reason.
Well, we're required to approve them as long as they qualify, and you're telling us they qualify, so, yeah.
And these are all college credits that these, they're picking up? And are some of these three, four credit courses or more?
It's pretty rare to take something above four. So, I, most of them are three, that's, you know, typical college course mode. As I look at these, I'm most positive that they all are.
And always remember, you need to approve them so the students can apply, but it sometimes doesn't work into their schedule. The universities don't offer the courses due to enrollment. So, we don't always have every student taking every course requested, but they were required to put in the request prior to enrollment.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, we have a motion by Mrs. Klein, second by Mr. Alexandrovich, to approve the youth options request as presented by Mr. Nowak. We have a roll call, please.
Sure. Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski?
No.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Did I say yes? Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Five to one.
Motion carries. Five to one. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next item, reports and presentations, the human resources report Franklin Public Schools Compensation Framework. Dr. Miller?
Unfortunately, we'll need the screen.
Well, thank you for your patience. And I know this is a bit small, but it will increase in size.
Oh, really?
As I move through the information. So, I promise you, it won't be this hard to see throughout the presentation. So, I would like to present to the board this evening some information about a compensation framework, and I will get started with that right now. So, we began a study of compensation in this district, starting in the summer of two thousand eleven. We actually began to contemplate and think about how we would like to pay our employees in this school district as early as two thousand eleven. And we began that process by looking at research. And one of the pieces of research that, you know, we looked at and thought about was, you know, what has happened with teacher compensation over time? It was important to understand that background, and you can see by reading the bullets, you know, what compensation was like in the twentieth century, and then how that changed at the closing of the twentieth century. And if it's difficult to read, at the bottom of that segment of this slide, you'll see that as early as nineteen eighty, or eighty-three, as a result of a nation at risk, it was recommended at that time that compensation be professionally competitive, market-sensitive, and performance-based. So, the ideas, you know, that many districts are talking about today were really ideas that were beginning to be discussed as early as nineteen eighty-three. We spent some time learning and talking about motivation as an important factor in terms of compensation, and contemplated these important questions. That led us to do some reading. Daniel Pink has written a book, Drive, which is a book about motivation and what it is in the work setting in terms of performance and what the factors are. And what he has identified as the primary factors in motivating people to perform within the work environment are a sense of purpose, a sense of mastery, and autonomy. So, these are really important factors with regard to performance and motivation. Prior to Daniel Pink's work, there were two researchers, Edward DC and Richard Ryan, who also studied motivation. And they came up with a theory called the self-determination theory, and it's very similar. And what they had determined was it was competency, autonomy again, and then relatedness, which is what really motivated people in the work setting to perform. Our next step in the process was to employ some consultants to work with us. Verisite is a company who consults with both private and public sector employers with regard to compensation and how employees should be paid. And the bullets on this slide identify that the work that Verisite had done with the district and with the district employees to design a framework for our compensation. They guided us through building a foundation by obtaining leadership perspectives. They did a number of constituent interviews, facilitated focus groups, did a presentation of alternatives. They helped to build the model. They went back for more feedback. We had work teams. We've shared the model, and of course, we're at a point where we would like to implement the model. Ten criteria were identified by Verisite that the district carefully considered as they moved forward in the development of a framework for compensating our employees. I won't read all ten of these items, but I can assure you that all of them were seriously considered as we moved forward in this process. One of the first steps in the process was to meet with the board and the administration and to ask a number of questions about compensation and obtain feedback and direction. Following that, we conducted teacher focus groups and interviews. With our consultants here, actually, the consultants did this work for us, thirty teachers were brought in for one-hour interviews. So, as you can see. So as you can see, there were ten teams of interviews who spent, each team spent an hour or more with the consultants from our compensation study to gather input and information about what this framework should look like. These teams were specifically designed to represent employees who are new to the district, employees who've worked here for a while, and employees in different content areas. So it was very specific in terms of covering the representative teacher employees in this district. And again, the consultants did spend the time to ask very open-ended questions about compensation. The feedback from that and from the focus groups, which there were at least two focus groups in which teachers were able to attend and share their views about how this framework should look, identified that teachers do expect that the compensation model be transparent and attainable. That was very important to them. They believe that the model needed, we needed to have a commitment to professional learning. The feedback identified that the model should recognize work that goes above and beyond. There should be increased opportunities for leadership. It needs to promote collaboration. The model should have some coaching embedded. And the model itself should allow for reliable, valid supervision and evaluation. So that the tools that were used to evaluate performance need to be valid and reliable. So this is very key and critical feedback that came from the focus groups and the individual interviews with teachers. After that, we brought together another group of individuals, teachers, and administration to develop ideas, and this is a list of those participants, based on that feedback, for how we could design the framework. Our consultants were involved in these meetings, and they brought to the meetings several examples of other compensation models. And the team looked at those models and provided feedback regarding the value of those models and perhaps how they would work or fit in Franklin Public Schools. There were actually two of these meetings conducted. During the process, the board was provided updates with regard to how this was going. In addition, I monthly put out something called an HR Q and A. And nearly every month, there was information provided to our employees regarding the progress of this study. So on April 24th, I brought to the board the goals of the process, and I also brought to the board what some important considerations were and essentially the timelines that we were following for getting input and feedback from teachers as well as getting input and feedback from our hourly employees. On July 7th, I met with the board. I shared more specific information about the frameworks and where we were in this process. So with all of that, a teacher model was developed. Dr. Patz, myself, Dr. DeZurich, and Mr. Milzer went to every single school in the district to a faculty meeting and presented the model and shared with the teachers the feedback and the thinking that was going on regarding this model. With regard to the support staff focus groups and interviews, we essentially paralleled the process. And we brought in employees from our representative employee groups. You'll see names listed here, people who work as educational assistants, secretary's office assistants, custodians, and food service. And our consultants, again, without us present, sat with these people for over an hour and talked about compensation and got their input and got their feedback regarding what it should look like. From that, we worked to develop a model. This is a piece of, this is a document that represents the feedback that we obtained from the consultants. After they spent all that time with the employees, they provided us very specific feedback about what our employees told them in that meeting. And that information was synthesized into some important pieces of feedback that we needed to consider, and then their recommendations from that feedback, which you'll see on the right there include increasing consistent communication, consider a pay-for-performance model, and that was coming out of the feedback, and then create a clear structure and progression, adequate training, and performance metrics. So given those recommendations, a model was designed to provide that clear feedback and create that performance metric. This is a performance rubric that isn't in its final form, but it does identify for hourly staff what the criteria is for their performance as an employee in this district. You'll see that listed on the left. You'll see a couple of things listed there, interpersonal relations, decision-making, and quality of work. Next to that, you'll see the actual attributes. What does that look like in the work setting? What is the expectation that we have as the employer for the employee? And then those attributes are measured. And every employee with this rubric would be identified as not meeting expectations, meeting expectations, or exceeding expectations. So it's very specific with regard to what the expectations are for their performance. Again, there are some things about this we still want to work out. There's some, you'll see that there's some points listed here. We're not sure that that's a direction we want to go in with, go with this. But we certainly wanted to move forward with the recommendations of our consultants and the feedback of our employees to create something that was very clear with regard to the expectations. So you'll see a second page to this, which includes communication, dependability, and goal-setting as the things that we are expecting from our employees and then how that looks. So the overall philosophy for compensation in this district for any employee has to do with attracting and maintaining staff that are outstanding professionals that positively impact student achievement. This is our philosophy. This is what we believe. And in order to continue to employ these outstanding professionals, it is essential that we have a compensation model that embodies high expectations coupled with a fair starting wage and a fair wage progression over time and compensable leadership opportunities. This philosophy is the result of the feedback that we have obtained from the people that work in this district. So what does the compensation framework look like for an employee in Franklin Public Schools? This is a simple diagram of what the compensation framework looks like. Employee has a wage, and the wage will vary. And if you look at the two boxes at the lower portion of this slide, and starting with the one on the right, you'll see that we will have and have salary bands for hiring purposes. So you'll see ten different positions listed in the district. And for each of those positions, there's a salary band. And within that band, there's a low number and a high number. Where a person is placed within that salary band is determined by what you'll see in the box on the left side. What is the market demand to pay for that person? What is that person's experience? What is their education? What is their performance in a similar job? And what are the external and internal comparables? So a decision is made when someone is hired in this district to pay them based on these variables. So you start with a wage, or you currently have a wage in this district. And if you meet the performance expectations, you will get a general increase. You will get an increase every year if you meet the expectations. You'll see the arrow going to the left. If you don't meet the expectations, as an employee, you will not get a general increase. So this system is the same system used for every employee in the district in terms of a wage, an annual wage increase. You'll see a small bubble above the one, the circle that says employees receive a general wage increase, which indicates that if an employee is in a bargaining unit in which they are negotiating for their wage, that would be included in the general increase. It wouldn't be outside of that. But the board would provide to the administration wage number or an amount, which would be part of that, which would constitute that wage increase for an employee. So again, essentially, employees have different wages. If they meet expectations, they will get an increase annually. Now, you'll see if you continue to the right. If the employee provides exceptional service, there would be supplemental pay or an increase for that. We have not yet developed that piece of the framework. In my mind, that's going to require the same kind of rigor that we place, put in place to develop the framework as it is today. Meaning, we need to get out and we need to look at the research on what supplemental pay is. We need to understand its impact. We also need to involve our employees to talk about what that should look like. And it has to be incredibly clear to everybody how to attain it. So there's more work to come on that. So just talking through briefly the teacher compensation framework, there are essentially three bands within the teacher area, starting with the new Franklin educator. These are teachers who are new to the district, and they remain in this area of the framework for the first three years of their employment. Now, the minimum salary is $44,000, but that does not mean that every new teacher hired makes $44,000. It absolutely does not mean that. If you think back to the previous slide, the market demand, the experience the person brings, all of that will factor into what their starting salary will be. So while some teachers will start at 44, some may start at $60,000, depending on those factors. So the employee that's new to the district is considered a new Franklin educator. They remain in this band for three years. And after that period of time, they have to be recommended for continuing employment in this district. They have to be recommended by the administration to become a professional educator. If they are recommended, they do become a professional educator. And if they are making less than $50,000, they will automatically obtain that as a new salary. So for example, someone right out of college would come to our district, maybe at age 21, 22, and they would make $44,000. They, after three years, if they're successful and they are asked to be a professional educator in our district, they will go to $50,000. That's that strong base salary that they will need to have. So the professional educator is about 74% of our teaching staff. It's most of our teachers in this district. And the minimum salary is $50,000. But right now, as we translate this to our existing staff, there will be professional educators making $78,000. So nobody will lose money moving into the new framework. Their salary will not be decreased. And that is, and then they're eligible for the annual increase if they meet performance expectations. You'll see something called salary enhancements. These are things that have been in place for a number of years in this district. If a teacher serves as a mentor, they would receive a mentor voucher. Some teachers have done grade level or been a department liaison, and they receive a stipend for that. And these are just strictly things that people may want to do or may not want to do, and they don't necessarily happen every year for every person. You'll also see national board certification listed there. The administration has great value in this certification. We have over 14 teachers now in our district who've attained this certification. And we do believe that there should be a salary enhancement associated with any teacher who has that certification. The program educator is a person who is teaching, but also has a bit of release time to work with other teachers to help lead some of our programs. So they're primarily teachers, but they are out of the classroom some of the time so that they can support teachers in their work. The minimum salary there is 60. So again, if someone moves from a professional educator to a program educator and takes on that level of responsibility, the minimum salary there would be $60,000. The specialist educator, and we'll talk more about it a little bit later, is not a teacher. They're not in the teacher classification. They're called technical specialists. And their role is quite different because they are going to be very involved in working with teachers in the classroom to support teaching in content areas. So there'll be a lot of formative support through working with another professional who's a specialist to significantly impact student achievement. In each of these areas, there are specific performance expectations for all of our employees and for each teacher in each career band. They are anchored in educator effectiveness. The statewide teacher practice evaluation program, and that is what will be used to measure teachers' performance in this district. And it's very clearly defined as, you know, what it is, what is expected of our teaching personnel. So after the development of this framework for teachers, there was a lot of work to do. I mean, we went out to the buildings. We explained this to every teacher, and we were very clear about, there's a lot of work to do. There's some details in here. One of the things I did not mention is that we're having teachers do 16 hours of professional development work every year, and we needed to define that. So in every instance, when we were at school, we asked teachers to volunteer to help us further develop this model, to serve on one of the work teams. So we had four different work teams that did a lot of that specific work around the framework that we have for teachers. So at this point, I'm going to kind of have Wendy help me a little bit to talk about what each of these teams are, and then go to, go from there.
Sure. After looking at the model, Judy determined with some input from me, because obviously, a lot of the work comes out of instructional services because the heart and soul of what teachers do is educate the students. So, and curriculum drives what they choose to educate them around. So we felt Judy wanted an implementation team, which is more something she leads and runs so that as we're implementing and working through this, there's a group of people that are looking at the model and helping, talking through the model with us and giving us input and ideas. So that team was designed, and their work is just beginning because we really haven't implemented yet. The second one was professional development. And what were we doing with those 16 hours? How would teachers find that valuable rather than something more that didn't support their work? The third one was salary enhancement. We had the salary enhancements on there, but what should be on that list? And how should we compensate? And how do we decide who's in those roles and what's happening? And then the final one was the leadership team. You saw in the research and the feedback, teachers felt it was very important. They had coaching and support to do the very rigorous work that's expected of them, that's very different than it was many years ago. And so how were we going to support them? And that's mostly Band Three and then Band Four people. We needed to ensure they were trained and prepped and ready to support people in a way that people knew was a supportive gesture and not any value to measure, I guess. So Judy had mentioned, we all went out and we, when Judy invited every teacher in the district as we went from building to building to send their name to her if they were interested in being on any of those teams. We told them what the teams were. And so this is the list of people that came forward. And the color coding was, we had to divide them up and put them on teams. Some people requested a team, but most people said, I'd like to be put where you think I could be. My expertise would be important. So we went through and tried to divide them evenly so that if you were on a work team, you did really get to work and you weren't just one of the people in a large crowd. So we divided them up and did that. So the professional development work team, and I teased Judy. I told her I have enough meetings and enough work to do around curriculum. This added about 20 meetings to my schedule to make sure all this happened and everybody. This added about 20 meetings to my schedule to make sure all this happened and everybody did have voice and opportunity. So the overall charge of the professional development team was, what are you doing with these 16 hours? So you can see, we said it had to engage in meaningful job embedded for professional development that resulted in student achievement. And it had to maintain our collaborative culture. So you see what the goals were. So we got together and some of the people that worked on that team are here in the audience tonight. And what, we came together and basically, they said, you know, we have a lot of initiatives in the district we're expected to do because the state mandates it, the new curriculum mandates it, there's a lot of things. And we do those and we do them diligently and we do a great job. But can we please have that time to do the other work that goes along into educating the kids that we don't often have an opportunity to do? So maybe design tests or design activities or events that help us deliver instruction. But we never get to talk about it with our colleagues because we're, we're doing the other work that's expected with all the great changes that have come in education today in every district. So we, and they said, and we don't want a ton of paperwork. We know we always have to talk about how it improves student learning, but can this just really be about working the work? Because there's a lot of work to do. So we said, absolutely. We designed a form, and I think Judy has that. And so starting, not this next school year, but the following school year, groups would get together around the natural collaborative groups we have. So they wouldn't have to run around and create groups. The first grade teachers would get together as first grade teachers. And the math department at the high school would get together as the math department at the high school. And the math department at the middle school would get together. And if they wanted to work five, 712 or 512, they could. Otherwise, it would be middle and high school separate. And they would say, you see on there, it says, completion of this plan meets the expectations of the professional development outlined in the compensation model. So one of the things you need to do to earn your annual raise is complete these hours. If you submit this and you follow through on it, you've done the work. And the, the great thing about this and what the teachers said was, it's very difficult sometime, if we're, if we're the high school math department of 14 people, we all can't be in the same room at the same time on the same day in the summer or nights or whenever we choose to do this work. But we all are responsible to know that we want to create a product or an outcome. So can we do what works for us? And we said, absolutely. So if there's somebody who has children and they want to do their work at home and send it back to the group, that's fabulous. If there's two people that want to get together on a continual basis because that's what they agreed to, that's fine. It's just that the group had to feel good that everybody was contributing equally and two people weren't carrying the workload for the group. So the, the, the expectation is the outcome. It's not, we're not monitoring the hours. Nobody's signing up. Nobody's checking off the hours. Nobody's turning in the hours. It's about the outcome that the group produces that will directly or indirectly lead to, to student outcomes. So it's a very not pay, labor intensive work as far as paperwork or, or bookkeeping around any of it. The salary enhancement team, I'm gonna-
Yep, I can jump in here.
Let Judy do that one?
Okay. So the, the key here was to have a definition of what, what's a salary enhancement. And a salary enhancement is something that's determined by the administration. It's available to teachers for the purpose of providing leadership that results in increased student achievement. So it's for getting some things done that we need to do to help, to help students achieve. So annually, teachers are selected to assume leadership and they, they potentially can receive a salary enhancement for doing that. And the salary enhancements don't go on their base salary. So when you do that activity that year, you get the enhancement. And if you don't do it the next year, you don't get it. So what, what is a, what constitutes a salary enhancement? What's the criteria? Well, working with the committee, we listed all of the things, many things that potentially could be salary enhancement, many things that teachers are doing. And we talked about, well, we have to decide which of those is a salary enhancement, which is just part of a regular job of teaching. So the criteria includes the time it takes, the expectations, the level of responsibility and the training needed. So this would be the general criteria for determining if something, you know, would be a salary enhancement and receive additional compensation.
And then the leadership team came together, again, off the list you, you saw earlier. And they were charged with determining, how are we going to support people who choose to move into leadership roles? And I do want to mention, the purpose of the leadership roles is to ensure that they're being led by people closest to them and closest to the students. So we want to ensure that Wendy DeZurich isn't leading the teachers in the building around literacy, but literacy specialists are leading those people. Or that the music department isn't led by Mike Zellmer. It's led by Lindy Rinders who understands the work. And I could give you examples of that. So in order to do that, those people said, we need training. And so the leadership team was a really fun team to work on because we really had to create something out of nothing. So what does this training mean and what is it going to look like in Franklin? And what we decided overall was that we need to respect the leaders doing the work and they don't necessarily need to sit before whomever and be lectured at all the time. Sometimes that's appropriate. So we decided, working, and Chad Kafka's in the audience today, because he's, was in there thinking of, how can we take advantage of technologies to honor teachers' time that are moving into the leadership roles? And to honor the different kinds of leaders that will be in the district. Not every level of leadership needs the same level of training. So we would, we use Moodle with the students. So we felt we would use Moodle with the teachers. And we would design self-paced mods. And the mods would be assigned based on your role and responsibility. So a system educator would need way more training than somebody who's choosing to lead a short-term initiative in the district. And they would go through the mods and acquire the training they needed. And in some cases, it would be face-to-face. And we said, you know, they said, can you give us a time? And we talked about, well, what's fair and reasonable? And they said, well, we really need to be, be for kids and with staff. So don't take us out of our, those responsibilities. So don't do it more than six times a year. And that's an ambiguous number that could change. And they said, can some of this please be on the clock? And can some of it be in the summer? And we want voice around when, when that would occur. So they would receive training that would be responsive to their needs. Again, we're not going to go in and make sure they log 46 hours in Moodle during the training. It's the outcome. Were you able to lead people to the charge you were trying to get them to? That's what your, would determine if you were successful or not, not how well you did in these mods. But the people in leadership roles were requesting to help them be trained because they didn't go through leadership training that administrators tend to go through.
So the individuals with the, the greatest role with regard to leadership in the district are these system specialists. These are the individuals that are content specialists who spend a great deal of time with teachers, helping them to improve their practice. So this is that segment of the, the framework that you saw. What we've done so far is we've created a very specific job description for those individuals. So it's very clear to them what the performance expectations are for them in this role. And we also partnered with some neighboring school districts, actually Elm Brook and a couple other small school districts, and secured a $25,000 grant to provide them coaching. So we have money now to spend on them, to help them learn to coach and work with teachers effectively. So we're real happy about that. Wendy, you want to talk about this, please?
Right. This is just an example of, if you're trying to visualize around leadership development, this is an example of Chad mocked up a Moodle course. And you, it would start out like this and below it would be a list of all the modules. And what are those modules? The group of teachers in that role talked about what those modules should be. And I didn't bring them along to go into detail this evening, but they were teacher-generated around, here's what we need to know to be the best leader in the district. So they helped us decide. And then we have a big ancillary list of notes on the side of all things you have to consider when you're leading in the district that we don't want to forget about. So as we're continuing to work and support those people, we have to honor, it's a, it's a long list of things that they wanted considered that are there for us, us to consider.
So the last work team is the implementation work team. I just have one slide here. We met with them just a couple of times, tried to help them see kind of the big picture on the framework for, for teachers in this instance. And this was the, this was their recommendation, that, that group of teachers that met with us, in terms of what we need to do next with regard to implementing this framework. So we have kind of a, a to-do list here of things to do. So in, with regard to involvement, there's a great deal of involvement in this process. Again, starting in 2011, there were 45 employees involved in interviews and those would be hour-long interviews. There were 67 people who attended focus groups. There were 20 people on the teacher ideas generation team. And there are 47 people who worked on the work teams to help put together all the pieces of the framework. So implementation is scheduled to begin July 1, essentially for next school year, 2014. And I'm sure the board is interested in what this might cost. So at this point, I'll defer to Mr. Millsner.
Okay. To move the framework forward, there's a couple of different cost areas. One is increasing from 190 to 195 days. We have a couple of categories that were doing that. We would need to put $30,000 into that, an additional salary, to get that moving. Salary increases for new job responsibilities, where people moved up into higher responsibilities will run about $59,000. The career band adjustments, so that the people are at those minimums that we had set, would be about $40,000. And then for national board certification pay, would run about $35,000. So about $164,000 in total to move forward with the framework.
The national board certification piece is a $2,500 salary enhancement that teachers who have national board certification would receive annually as long as they maintain their national board certification. It does not go on their base salary at this point. That's not how we have structured it. But it is actual, it's additional salary for holding that, that certification. There is a slide here. It relates to a question I had from the board about how many people are in each of these, these career bands? The blue in the pie graph identifies teachers with less than three years. So essentially, that first career band. The salary amounts in there right now range from $43,000 to $74,000. So we have people in that first career band with wages within that range. The red portion of the pie graph represents teachers, most teachers in our district. They have more than three years of experience. And our salaries range from $44,000 there to $87,000. The green is our program educators. Those are essentially our FIAED, music and art program educators who will support that program and teach. Salaries range between $60,000 and $87,000. And then the system educators, that's purple, those are the content specialists who will be in classrooms right now. Those are our reading specialists and our math specialists. Their salaries range between $63,000 and $89,000. And this was a bit of information that was requested at a previous meeting.
And our ITL people are in that.
Correct.
Or tab.
That, that was relating to teachers, by the way. So again, this is the, the general diagram with regard to the compensation framework. And I would ask that the board approve this compensation framework for the employees of, of this school district. And that would conclude my presentation. Thank you for the presentation. Do we have questions and comments from the board?
I have a question. When you went to the focus groups within all the schools, was there a lot of resistance? Or not the focus groups, I'm sorry, the faculty meetings? Was there a lot of resistance to this from the staff?
I, I didn't get any follow-up from anyone that was negative following those meetings. And, and after most of the meetings, I was approached by individuals who, who shared that they thought it was a good, good framework for compensation.
And I, I would just comment, I will tell you, they were quiet in the meetings because they were, it's overwhelming to see it for the first time. So we, we expected to hear later, but not at that time because they had to process. So we understand that.
We also have several building administrators here this evening. So if you, you know, have any questions for them or if they would like to make any comments, I would, you know, welcome them to do so.
I have a question. You indicated there was an ideas generation meeting back in November of 2012 and other compensation models were shared. What were those like? What did we?
They're very different, very unique. I couldn't possibly explain the specificity of each of those. I, I'm not sure if Ms. Klein was at that particular meeting, Mr. Nielsen. So they're, they're very, very different. They vary quite a bit with regard to, you know, how they were set up.
It was several months ago, so my memory might be a little fuzzy. But what I recall is that they were all, like, like Dr. Mueller said, very different from each other. And, and our evaluation consisted of kind of pulling apart things we liked and didn't like about each of those models. And then that feedback is, is, I think, part of what drove the development of this model.
Was there any particular criteria that made you, you know, choose this one?
This wasn't a choice that evening. No, this, that was not part of the ideas generation. It was to gather what were the best parts of all of those things so that the model could be built and the framework could be built.
Yeah. This model is not the same as any of those. This is completely unique to Franklin.
And what, what the committee was charged with, because I was there that evening, was you had to go back to what the focus groups said and valued. And so when you looked at the model, it wasn't about what did Wendy deserve personally? Like it was what did the feedback state from Verisite that we need to keep in mind based on the input of the staff? So that was our criteria for giving input around those models.
One of the questions I have is certainly we don't want to put a framework together, administration wouldn't want to put a framework together that's going to want our quality staff to leave, but we want to keep them here. And that was one of the whole reasons, and you mentioned in the slides, about retention and also to foster collaboration amongst the staff. So what I'm hearing, and, and I don't want to put any one of the people who are on the committees on the spot, but certainly if they want to answer the question, how, how do we reconcile the gap between what we heard in community comment that this will stifle collaboration and everyone was going to leave versus what the team said when they were going through the process of this, this program's going to foster collaboration and, and help us retain? Those are two completely opposite ideas. And I'd love to see that reconciled.
I'm not sure why persons who spoke this evening believe that it, it's harmful to collaboration. But any system that ranks and rates teachers and pays them on that ranking is harmful to collaboration. This framework does not do that. We were very conscious of that. We did not want to measure a teacher's performance and rank them based on their performance and attach pay to that. Because that indeed will break down collaboration. This model doesn't do that. So we had, we're very conscious of that, very specific with regard to not designing a framework that would rank and rate teachers and therefore pit them against each other.
And another comment, I think, is people think they have to take those leadership roles. Those leadership roles are there because research says, if you want a quality district, teachers in the field have to have voice around their work and they need to be led by their colleagues. So those are there to provide opportunity for teachers to have leadership roles in a position that truly is influential in helping to design a curriculum area and then support that work. So nobody's expected to do that. Teachers would, some people like to- Teachers would, some people like to do that to enhance their salary. They might, but most people would tell you the money they make never compensates them for the time you put in those roles. How teachers will accrue salary is kind of more common to the non-teaching world now. It's, it's over time, you will receive the pay increase that the board says we can give people. And the difference is you were capped at the end of a salary schedule before. Now, when Jim costed that out, teachers have the opportunity, if they stay their career in Franklin, to make more than they would have ever made because there's no end cap on it. So they're, they don't have to take leadership roles, and we don't expect people to take them. And so I think there's some misperception that that's an expectation, you have to do that. But there, there is no requirement. Those are in there to facilitate collaboration and to give teachers voice.
We have these different minimum wage classifications set up. Is there any plan as to how those are going to change over time tied to inflation? Board will approve them every year, every three years? What?
We were looking at tying them to inflation or the increases, the general increases that the staff get so that those would move up along with the, the wages that the rest of the staff are making.
Okay, will that be approved by the board every year?
We didn't see it being approved by the board every year. Now it'd be kind of the way the model would work.
Because there are a lot of positions and a lot of wages that although inflation goes up, pay doesn't necessarily go up with that. And I'm not trying to not have it go up. I just, you know, you, you don't want it to be automatic. Like, what was it, the gas tax just automatically went up for years and it started to just get out of hand. And at, and at some point, it is out of hand.
Yeah, having it keyed to the consumer price index and the rate of inflation would, would not be really seeing a person get ahead on their salary. It would, it would see that base keeping up with the rate of inflation and essentially being at that same place. So if we thought that, that this was the right wage now, we wanted that to keep up with inflation. So it stayed the right wage over time and that we wouldn't have to make massive changes in that or, or look at then moving all kinds of staff. You might have forty, fifty staff if you wait several years that have been hired that then you need to move them as well because everyone that's coming in might be making even more than they were making. So we wanted to have that keep up with the model so that it would move over time.
I think an important thing to keep in mind is that this is just a minimum too. And I think how it's going to play out is that it's going to be based more on those other factors that Dr. Miller mentioned, like, like experience and the market. And I don't know, there were five or six of them. I can't think of them off the top of my head, but it's going to definitely be more market-driven. This is just the bottom.
There was a comment that this might not provide a living wage, you know, for our employees who live in Franklin. But I just looked up the 2010 census for Franklin, said the median, median income for a household in the city of Franklin was fifty-five thousand, three hundred and fifteen dollars. And the median income for a family was sixty-five thousand, five hundred and thirty-two. And I think forty-four thousand dollars for a starting employee just out of college, starting educator is a fair salary. And I think that's above other districts for a starting salary. Also, I think steps and lanes are outdated and out of touch. And I don't, I don't see why a teacher wouldn't want to be motivated with enhancements. I think it's good for the district to have enhancements. We give incentives to students. So I, I think it's good for our teachers.
I guess I didn't know that the minimum salaries were going to change every year with, with the tied-in. I know, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I know that was a conversation we had yesterday in our meeting. And that it was, the answer was the other way. And so I don't know how comfortable I feel. I think I'm more with what you were saying. Maybe that's something that can be reviewed on a year-by-year or whatever basis. But I also understand the quandary we could get into if you bring someone at a certain number. But then after a few, after a number of years, if that minimum changes, now we have a whole group to move up again. So I'd like to.
It, it, it becomes a financial burden really quickly. At three or four years, you could have so much money that you have to inject into it where if you had kept up with it and done it yearly, you'd be fine. The other change, and we saw this when we were negotiating salary schedules, is we would drop steps to have the minimum come up. And then we would end up hiring people at the same wage as someone who had been here. It was even five years they were making. But that was where we needed to be. And there was no way the district could afford the money to move everybody up again, like a five-thousand-dollar increase. So one of the things we want to do is keep up with that. Take it in little increments and keep up over time. It's, it's a much better way to do it financially so that we can, we can keep up with it as well as really from a staff perspective and having new people come in at, at the same wage that someone who's been here a long time.
One of the things we talked about was there's just, there's very few people who move from one band to the next every year. You know, there'll be a small number of people moving from the first band to the second. And there'll be very few people moving from the second band to the third. So there's very few people moving to hit those minimums.
So are we talking about the first band having the adjustment or all three bands having the adjustment every year?
I think all three bands would have the adjustment because all of those minimums, you know, need to move in sync so that we don't get compression on the sk, on the bands as well.
From my understanding, it's the minimum is not necessarily what you, you bring somebody in at market and experience.
Right.
This is just the minimum.
It's just the minimum. Right, right.
So therefore, if the minimums never change, it's not an issue.
It should be a problem.
Because you're going to pay the people the market rate.
Well, but you'll have new people that don't have that experience factor or any of those other qualifications. And the market around us may go up, and we still have to have that band go up as well for those people.
If, if they're coming in and they don't have any experience, then what's their market value? It might remain, six years from now, forty-four thousand. If that's the market.
But the, the, the minimum has to relate to the responsibilities of the job. You can't attach a low amount to a job that requires, you know, a high level of education or leadership or responsibility. So that's why that minimum has to come up because it needs to be commensurate with the work. So the sixty thousand dollars for a program educator, you know, that, that has to match. It has to match the, the work. And again, there's very, very few people who go from professional educator to program educator. I think we have like four people in that, in that career band right now.
So if inflation continues, starts to get higher with whatever's going to happen in the economy, and we look at that consumer price index and we continue to raise, and the forty-four is now fifty-two, five, six years from now, and the marketplace is still paying forty-four, what are we going to pay?
I think that's something that we would definitely bring to the board. I mean, if the system isn't working, we're not going to follow it just because it is. We would take a look at that, and we, we know all of the districts in the area. We can keep track of that. If others aren't going ahead and moving ahead with what they're paying, then that, we're looking at the market, and the market isn't changing or the market is doing something different than we're doing, we have to take that into account. So it isn't, it isn't a, a blind system. You know, it isn't that we're saying that this is going to go on no matter what. We do have to keep an eye on the market, definitely. But as we look at what's happened in the last few years with other school districts, they're giving about the increase that we're giving. So we aren't far off the mark. I wouldn't expect it to be different. But if it was, if that scenario played out that you had, that everyone else stayed the same and we were the only ones increasing, we would certainly look at that and come to the board and say, you know, we're not recommending an increase for this year.
To take a different point of view, I'd almost rather have it see the other way. I'd rather have Judy come to the board and say, I know our minimum is set here, but the market conditions are dictating that we continually hire here. And so I think it's recommended that district, district set the minimum salary for a new educator here because this is where I always am, rather than us continuing to move up the bar. But finding the market may not be where our bar is. They, they may both get to the same place, but one has a definite, different downside protection than, than another one. So you're still going to hire at the market. You're still going to have to be able to pay what that person across the desk is willing to come in and pay. And so. I agree, the forty-four thousand dollars doesn't handcuff you to pay only forty-four. If the market's fifty-four, that's where you have to go. But if the minimum reads that we're now four years in and the minimum is forty-nine, then it doesn't, you know, then if the market's at forty-five, it doesn't matter. We're hiring at forty-nine unless, unless you got board action to reduce the minimum. And how would that play out? Now you say Franklin, Franklin board just reduced the minimum requirement to hire a teacher.
Right, and I think that goes along with what I said. You know, we would come back to you and say, you know, we're, we're not going to do it this year if we get into that kind of situation where it was different. But we also don't want prospective teachers from other districts and coming out of college looking at our minimum and having it not change. But we know in the back of our mind that we're paying more than this, but they're looking at it, comparing it to other districts and saying, wow, they're really falling behind because our minimum hasn't changed. We don't want that to happen either. And you can't really get that word out, oh yeah, that's what this says, but we pay more than that. You want this to reflect that we're very competitive because that's one of the things especially initial educators look at is what that wage is. So I understand your concern, and we don't want to be in the spot that you're talking about. So we will definitely guard against that. But the, the two things we have to look at are the CPI and what's going on around us, that market. And not everybody will be at the minimum. But we have to be very competitive in what we're portraying for that.
I would just say, considering it's such a new program, maybe these next couple of years, we could take it as a year-by-year basis and see what kind of feedback you have as you're going through the process. And, and maybe we end up looking at it three years from now and saying, you know, tying this into whatever increases makes a whole lot of sense. It's something we don't have to worry about because this is how it's playing out. Or you find that it needs to have different tweaks. But considering this is so new, maybe we just take this on a more cautious approach and see what kind of feedback we get.
Dr. Patz, did you want to offer any comments?
I think everybody covered, you know, my biggest concern were, obviously, we want to retain and keep and retain as far as getting new teachers that are, you know, very high level. But I also think for me, as I was working through this model, the performance expectations, I think, are, are critical. And fortunately, we have people who meet those without any issue whatsoever. But we also want to have that as a benchmark to make sure that we have the best and the brightest. And also, we can identify those areas that we need to put professional development into play in because I think the sixteen hours that was talked about is critical. And it, there are districts who, you know, just sort of take those sixteen hours and don't do much with them. And I think our professional development here in this district has always been very structured and very demanding. So I think when you take a look at the, you know, the expectations and you tie that to the salaries and the bands and so on, so forth. And I think that, you know, the first thing that, when I first looked at it, when, in the first draft of this, I looked at the, the minimum salaries and I thought, you know, that, how does that fit? I think we're going to find that most people aren't even going to be near those minimum salaries. They're going to be above that. And one of the things that I think we were all concerned with is we could not have anything go backwards. It had to go forward because our people, not only do they deserve it, it's, it's not only what the market, but our profession should require. So I think all those things combined, and I agree with Jim wholeheartedly that I think we have to tie this to the CPI to make sure that we're moving forward. But to Tim's point and that, that Jim reiterated, we have to make sure that as we watch this, we watch the CPI, we watch the market and what our demands are. And who knows what kind of educational demands are going to change over the next three to five years? I mean, look at education ten years ago and what we expected and how, how different they are right now. So I think the model encompasses a lot of things. I think it's got to be, like anything, it's got to be put into play and see what's working well, what's not, reevaluated, and, and really sort of give it a chance, I think, is the biggest part of it. I think it, it offers opportunity, and that's, that's what I think is important.
Are the salary enhancements all defined? You did mention the national board certification specific dollar amount.
Yeah, the national board certification would be a, a new salary enhancement that we have not had in the past. But the others we have currently had for a number of years in the district, and we would continue those forward.
It'd be unchanged.
Right, at this point.
And they do develop over time though, because when a new initiative comes forward, an example is we have, all middle and high school teachers are expected to embed disciplinary literacy standards into their content curriculum, and that's new work for them. So we right now have thirty-five teachers being trained on what that means. And then they'll be supporting the colleagues in their content area. And they've received one stipend, and they're probably going to need to receive another one because now they have to do the work. They had to commit to summer trainings and nights and weekends. And now they have to assist us next year in making that shift. So depending upon what we're required to do or what we decide to do, sometimes you have to add those enhancements. So they come and go as necessary?
Then the, the future supplemental pay for exceptional performance, that is not defined at this point, is that correct?
Correct.
When will we expect to see, is that coming back to the board?
Yes, that would come back to the board.
And when would that happen?
You know, again, we want that to be a thoughtful process that involves people and a study of the research and, and perhaps our consultants again. So I would say it could be a year, two years before the board is seeing that plan.
Well, I'd say we, we want this to be a positive change. And so there's definitely going to be some reconciliation that'll have to be done at the meeting level with, with the staff and everybody else to have them understand or to explain or however we're going to get everyone on the same page about this collaboration. The philosophy screen that you added, I think that there's obviously still some disconnect. And so that's, obviously, you're going to have to work on that.
And I think to comment that many of the people here tonight heard some of the details for the first time unless they were on work committees. We, we had to go about this in, in some type of a systematic way, so it had to be designed. You have to approve money for the model. So we had to share this information with the board, and then we're going out to the teachers with the details. But it, it, it took a long time to develop and work through all those details because we didn't do it in isolation. We did it with people. They had to be subbed out, they had to give up their nights. We had to work it into everybody's existing work structure. Nobody was waiting around for more committee work or, you know, more to do. But we knew we had to follow that process. So I, I just want to say that I know they didn't know all the details, and Judy knows that because we didn't get to that step yet. That's in the works to come up. Dr. Patz, Jim, Judy, and I will go back out to the buildings again and share all those details. And at that time, the committee members that worked with us will be able to speak to it as well because they'll be out in the buildings and they can talk about their role and what they did.
The, the three big themes that I saw or that I took from the community comment in my mind have been addressed. And that was that we want to attract and retain our employees. And that one of the speakers said talent follows money. And, and that's true. And I don't think this, this plan will limit us in any way because it doesn't have any caps. And it gives us some flexibility, flexibility that we need, quite frankly. The other, the second theme was the collabor, the collaborative aspects of it. And I, I really think that that's something that you guys considered seriously and that we value here in Franklin. And I know that if, you know, there would be any unforeseen consequences that would affect that, then that would be something we would take seriously and, and work to address. And then the, the third theme was, was the issue of staff input. And based on your presentation, Judy, I've, I'm pretty convinced that there was a lot of staff input. It might not have been some of the people that spoke, but I think there were a lot of people involved. And I know, you know, any change is, is scary, any change is hard, even if it's a good change. And I'm, I'm hopeful that this will be a good change. But I do agree that we can't continue going on the way it's always been. You have to start somewhere.
We know this is going to cost us a hundred and sixty-four thousand. That's the number that we're presented. Do we know what?
Do we know what kind of projection we have as to what this is going to cost us additionally year over year? Or is that 164, just a one-time hit, and then everything is going to build on as we add raises to that?
Correct.
Okay.
It's a one-time.
And again, on the comments, one was, "Our main job is to attract and retain." But no, our main job is student achievement. And as it said in the philosophy, "Attract and retain for a positive impact on student achievement." And I agree that that's what this does or that's what the plan for this is if we adopt it.
I agree that the change, you know, is in the right direction. I'm not 100% comfortable with not knowing about the, that last piece. Because I, you know, when I look at this, it does, it does very much flatten the progression. And I think there needs to be some recognition that there, you've got to know where you might be in five years from now. I'm, but I'm willing to give this a chance here, and, but I will be looking really hard at having that come back. Because that's, I think that's important.
I would add that the feedback we obtained was that, you know, there is an interest in having that supplemental pay for exceptional performance. So we do want to build that piece.
Would anyone like to make a motion? We're looking for a motion to approve the Franklin Public Schools Compensation Framework as presented.
Effective date is when? When will we?
July 1, 2014.
I will make a motion to approve the new framework as recommended. Is there a second?
I'll second, one second.
Second by Mr. Alexandrovich. A motion by Mrs. Klein and a second by Mr. Alexandrovich. Is there any discussion?
The one point of discussion I'd like to add in the form of an amendment is that the minimum salary requirements come back to the board annually, at least initially, to get some feedback as to how the process is working, rather than tying it into CPI annually. This doesn't mean that can't change, but that'd be the motion I would make, the amendment I would make to the motion.
I'll second that. We have a...
Does Melissa have to accept that?
No. I seconded, so we should really vote on that amendment before we...
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Nielsen and a second by Mrs. Witkowski that the Franklin Public Schools Compensation Framework come back to the board annually.
Just the minimum salary requirements. I just want the minimum salary requirements to be the numbers that they are, rather than tied in to an automatic increase and that we get annual feedback as those numbers may end up changing with an automatic increase, just not initially because it's such a new plan.
Did you want to put a couple of years to that? And you wanted that for two or three years?
Yeah, two years, let's say. Two years makes sense. It'll give us some idea.
Do you have that, Megan? Yeah, okay. Any discussion? Hearing none, can we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
I say yes. Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, on the original motion, then we had a motion by Mrs. Klein. And was that correct, Mrs. Klein? Yeah. Motion by Mrs. Klein and a second by Mr. Alexandrovich. Any discussion? That was to approve the Franklin Public Schools Compensation Framework. Can we have roll call, please?
Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
I say yes. Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Item 9C, we're just going to have a brief board retreat discussion to determine the framework of the board retreat and how many of those we might want to have, whether it would be an all-day retreat or two half-days.
I didn't get responses back from everybody, but I think everybody, so far, the ones I got seem to prefer the evening as opposed to an all-day Saturday and possibly two. And I think the consensus so far had been to address the goals, board goals, superintendent goals, so on, so forth. And so like I said, that's where it's at, as far as people that had gotten back to me so far.
It takes at least three to four hours to discuss just the goals. Then we can also discuss what we want to do with the next retreat. At that retreat, if we...
One request that came through was the request to have a facilitator do it, run our retreats. So that's just putting that on the table so that everybody knows that that was a request that had been made.
I think that any goals discussion needs to be based on a discussion of our board's self-evaluation.
Yeah, I think we all agree on that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I think that's going to drive, you know, what we want to accomplish and improve on for the following year.
Yeah, I agree.
And I think it works best if we have a facilitator.
A WASB facilitator?
No, not necessarily. It could be a volunteer from the administration or just somebody that's not one of us seven or probably not Dr. Pats either.
I think it should be somebody from outside the organization.
Do you?
I think there needs to be fresh eyes, somebody that has absolutely no preconceived notions and has an opportunity to, you know, work with the group a little bit and do some things. And I can, if the board wishes, I can get some suggestions for that and Jen and I can discuss them and we can run by everybody from there.
Maybe somebody even not necessarily tied into education. I mean, maybe some, a community leader or a community speaker, but yeah, somebody who can...
There are business people.
Yeah.
You know, there are two people I've used in the past, this is many years ago, that evil chuckle, that one was Mike LaCron, the band director from UW Madison. And he was unbelievable. And the other one was the guy who started Rocky Rokoko Pizza. And it was, they came from an environment of working with people, obviously, and goals and all those kinds of things. And I have since heard of people that have used them. I don't think Mike LaCron does it anymore, and I don't know if the Rocky Rokoko guy is even still around. But my point is that you can get outside that venue and people have the same type of organizational structure of dealing with people, of creating, you know, culture of positive, those kinds of things, and how important it is for teams to work together and that kind of thing. So we can explore that a little bit, if you like. I do think it would be important if we're going to be studying and working off of the board's self-evaluation that we have an entire board that did the self-evaluation. I do think we need that last piece. So whenever we set this up, we just got to make sure that's in.
And would they have that in advance, too, so they kind of know?
Do I, Linda?
Would the facilitator have that?
Oh, yeah. I think the facilitator has to have all that information and probably a series of what we've done in the past and just to get a little flavor of what we've been doing. And oftentimes, a good facilitator is going to send out some sort of a questionnaire to you individually that's confidential. And some do and some don't, but it helps them identify things that you may not be comfortable saying, but that need to be said. That, I think, is important.
The goal is to get goals, right?
Well, the three things that came through were the goals for board superintendent and the board's self-evaluation were the top three that had come back so far.
So since we were beginning a facilitator, now do we have to wait to talk dates from a facilitator before we, or do we want to get an idea from us?
I think maybe we should get an idea from us. That way, we can see if the facilitator's available on those days. Might be a better way to go.
So which month are you looking at?
Well, we're, I thought we might try from, oh, April?
No.
Oh.
Oh, we said after the election, that's right.
Well, we have to make sure who's on the board, first of all.
Right.
Yeah, so, yeah, so...
Oh, so we can't... So assume anything?
The sooner the better because we have to have at least two retreats. One without a facilitator, most likely, an outside one like this. But so April, you know, April, if we can look at April, and if not, early May.
Do Tuesdays or Thursdays work for anybody, or are we relegated to Wednesdays?
Thursdays are better for me, or Wednesdays. I don't know about everything else.
Tuesday is typically not good for me. I can make it good, but I need a little advance. Monday, Thursday?
I could do either one of those. Mondays, Thursdays?
Which days?
Either Monday or Thursday. Actually, I don't have any other standing thing.
So you want to stay away from Wednesdays? Is that what I'm hearing? I'm trying to see if we can steer clear of Wednesdays for you personally because I, Wednesdays, I'm not here, I'm doing something else. And, I mean, I'll make it work if that's what we want to do, but if Mondays or Thursdays wouldn't be...
How about... Where are we now? We got, we're on the 24 pointer there. How about looking at the first one as a possibility for Thursday, April 17?
Sounds good to me.
April 17? That's okay.
Could we start that at 6 o'clock or 5:30?
That's right before the Easter break. I don't know if that makes a difference. They're off Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday.
We already have Easter break.
When's Easter? No, that's Easter, that's Good Friday and the next, the Sunday, Monday after.
Easter's the 20th? Oh, yeah, that's one of those.
Well, it's a Thursday, though. I mean, it's not a Friday or a Saturday or Sunday.
But they're off at school Friday, so if people want to leave, they leave Friday or Thursday.
Are you going somewhere?
Anybody want to tell them Thursday, Friday? Instead of this right now?
The 20th is Easter?
Yes.
I'm probably going to be in church, sorry. Okay.
The 20th or the 17th?
17th. 17th, I can do it. It's my daughter's first communion.
How about 24th?
I can do that. That's fine.
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
That'll be two nights in a row because we have a board meeting the 23rd. Is that okay with everybody? Doesn't bother me.
I don't have a mic.
We got to get the ball rolling.
This is subject to a court of facilitators.
What is the best time to start so, because it'll...
Probably 6:00.
6:00 is the best time or earlier.
And you want to look at a second one then for, how about May 8?
Sorry, that doesn't work.
We're just throwing dates out here, so just...
Yeah, the 8th doesn't work for me.
Okay. Or do you want to go on a different day for the second one?
I may not.
You said Mondays tomorrow?
It doesn't have to be Thursdays. I was just throwing things out there. Mondays are fine. Tuesdays, they don't work for other people.
About the 5th or the 12th?
The 5th is Cinco de Mayo.
I'm reading my calendar.
5th or 12th?
Either is fine by me.
5th is fine for me.
I'm okay on the 5th.
I'm good.
Okay.
Should be okay.
Okay, May 5?
Maybe we could always change it if we have to.
No, just, that doesn't leave a lot of time between the first one and the second one, or maybe we don't really need to, is one compound on the other?
It just depends. Now, what are we going, we don't know what we're going to do with that one until we have our first retreat. So let's see what that leads into. I mean, it's about a week and a half. I think, you know, if we don't have anything to discuss on the second one, we shouldn't have it. But if we do, then we have the date open. Yeah. I think there were some suggestions for team building. Did you get any of those?
One, yeah.
Anything else on that topic? Okay, thank you. Item 9D, Treasurers Report.
Yes. Cash balances as of March 21, 2014. In the general fund, we have 15,603,236. And the debt service fund, we have 6,443,535. And I have to scroll here. Prior to April 23, we anticipate cash requirements in the amount of 4 million for the March 31 and April 15 payroll and accounts payable. And along with the Treasurers Report, we do have the reports and the SaaS reports as well as the cash check register. And I had made a request to Jim to rather than include them in the, embedded in the agenda, if we could put those into the library under a finance folder to make it easier to locate if you want to compare a prior report or flip through it. Would that be okay?
Right. Yeah, I responded that if that's what the board wanted to have them in the library rather than on the agenda, we could do that.
It's not a lot of additional work, right? Just pop them in there?
Right, we would just put them in the library then, and you'd have them all in the same place.
And I imagine that you probably combine the check issued with the other reports. Can we keep them separate, separate documents, so it's not the same PDF?
Which do you want separated out?
The list of checks issued would be one PDF and then the other reports would be another PDF.
Could do it that way. Sure.
Other reports?
What other reports?
I don't think it matters if they're one or multiple. Does it?
I have preference for keeping them separate.
For easy reference back and forth.
Correct. Just, yeah, it just makes sense. You would have a folder of checks issued, January, February, March, whatever, and then you'd have another folder of the expenditure and revenue report by month. And I would think that you're already got them separate, so you don't have to combine them like you're combining them now. So I'm imagining that Megan maybe puts them in there, so there won't be any additional work on your part. Are we good?
I don't know. What is the, is that what the board would like?
I don't have any objection to them being in the library. I mean, if it's, if they're separate, I don't have a problem with it. For you making folders, I don't know what anyone else thinks.
Do you generate them separately and then they get combined, or do you generate them all together?
They get combined into one PDF.
But they're generated separately. Because one is computer printed out and the other one is a download to a probably a spreadsheet.
Right.
I personally have no preference, so...
Yeah, I don't care either.
Having them separated or not does not matter to me, so...
Doesn't matter to me at all either.
Okay, so with a preference of one, we'll separate them out.
But I'll hold with Linda.
A preference of two, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
As long as we still have them.
I'm looking for a motion to enter into closed session to discuss performance evaluation data for the district administrator pursuant to Wisconsin statute 19.85, sub 1, sub C. Do we hear that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Mrs. Schleter. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Nielsen. Any discussion? Hearing none, maybe we have a roll call.
Mr. Alexandrovich?
Aye.
Mrs. Witkowski?
Aye.
Mrs. Evans?
Aye.
I say yes. Mrs. Klein?
Aye.
Mr. Nielsen?
Aye.
Motion carries. It's 8:29. We are now in closed session. We'll take a five-minute recess.